Call or order, tonight's Albany Common Council meeting, March the 19th. Can a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Anani. Mr. Plaris.
Here.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Ms. Duchesne.
Here.
Ms. Fahey.
Here.
Ms. Ferrell.
Here.
Mr. Flynn.
Here.
Mr. Howie.
Here.
Mr. Igo.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Here.
Ms. Love.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Robinson. Fifteen present.
Thank you. Can everyone stand with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance and have a moment of silence after that?
Please, gentlemen, the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands my nation, where God and the faithful, the liberty and justice were.
Thank you. Now we move to our public comment period. At this time, every individual that's called, that has signed up, will have five minutes to speak upon any subject they would like to speak to in that time period. Council members just listen. They cannot answer any questions or take any questions from the public. So can a clerk please call the first speaker? Ms. Nancy Benedict.
My name is Nancy Benedict. I live at 31 Forest Road in Delmar. Now, last year, you had a bill that was in committee, and I believe it was never reported out of committee. I believe the number was 1 dot 11 dot 15. This was a bill which would have required marking of fire hydrants so people could not park in front of fire hydrants. I think that this should be reintroduced in this legislative session. And in addition to requiring marking of fire hydrants, I believe you all should mark bus stops because it's important that cars not park in bus stops. It should be illegal. I am told that the police will not write tickets for cars that are parked in bus stops unless there are signs marking the bus stops. And there is very few bus stops that are marked in the city of Albany. Having cars parked in bus stops is, it makes it so the buses cannot stop up at the curb, which means that senior citizens and other people with mobility disabilities have to walk, step down into the street and walk to the bus. And it's harder for them to step into the bus because they're down lower. And it's also bad in the winter especially because in the winter, if there's snow, if there's snow in the bus stop and there's cars parked there, they can't plow the bus stop. And the bus stop becomes unsafe for the bus riders, basically. Now, the other thing I want to talk about is that our group, Citizens for Public Transportation, started a campaign back in November to try and get better, safer bus stops in other ways, other than cars parking there. But the thing of it is, we want to get our message out to the general public about this campaign. We have to get safe, accessible, clean bus stops. And we cannot do it on the Channel Albany TV channel where we used to have a program every week, which we used to do to get our message across to the general public. But the public access channel, Channel Albany, has been closed for 292 days because they didn't have a coordinator. The last day it was open, we did a program, and that was on May 31st. And we haven't had the use of the channel for the general public since then. And I think this is a disgrace to have it closed for 292 days. And it'll be 300 days on March 27th. It's just a disgrace that you have the TV studio closed for that much time. There's absolutely no excuse for it. And now there's another problem. They thought they had a new coordinator appointed, but he wants more money. And it looks like they're going to have to issue another request for people to apply for the job. And goodness knows when it's going to be open. And I think it's a disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you. A clerk, please call the next speaker. Ms. Margaret Diggs.
Good evening to each and every one of you. My name is Margaret Diggs. I live at 172nd Street here in the city of Albany. I'm not here tonight to talk about taxes, or snow, or guns. I'm here tonight to talk about a traffic safety, a public safety issue for the students who attend the Edmund O'Neill Middle School of Excellence. I am a member of the Arbor Hill Neighborhood Association. I'm also a Democratic Committee person. And the intersection that I'm going to talk to you about actually is in my election district. I know that members of the Arbor Hill Neighborhood Association have come and spoken with you before regarding this concern. Before I came to the meeting tonight, I walked over to the school to take a look at the cornerstone because I was interested in when the building was first erected, and that was 2001. Since that time, there have been absolutely no indication from the city of Albany that there is a concern about the safety of the foot traffic coming and going to school five days a week. We are now well into the school year. As a member of the Neighborhood Association, we have talked with the Police Department. We have talked with the school district about working collaboratively to take a look at what can be done to improve the safety at that particular intersection. I don't know if all of you are familiar with the intersection that I'm talking about, but it is Lark and Second Street. And any time of day, there is a considerable amount of traffic because it's a main thoroughfare from one side of town to the other. In the morning, the kids have to compete with all the commuter traffic coming into the city. In the afternoon, they have to compete with utility trucks, school buses, motorists, and other kinds of hazards. And one of the reasons that I'm talking with you about this tonight is because I really don't want to see us wait until something happens. I mean, something really bad happens, like a kid gets clipped or a kid gets killed at that intersection. That's usually when a response gets triggered. I'm really asking for our city administrators to be proactive with this matter. As I say, for 17 years, we've seen very little level of address to this concern. We either need some sort of traffic slowing devices. We need a five-day presence of Albany Police Department force. We need a traffic light, or we need some crossing guards. I mean, I think there are some alternatives that could be exercised to promote increased safety for the kids coming and going to that school. One of the other reasons that we're here is because we also understand that the enrollment at the school is going to be increasing over time. So there will be even more children. The risk will be even more increased as the enrollment increases. I really tried to speak off the top of my head, but I wanted to just say that if there, we understand that the City Engineering Department has
You have one minute left, Ms.
indicated that there will be a traffic safety study done. One of the things that I would like to see happen, and I think the members of the Neighborhood Association would like to see happen, is we need to close the loop on that. It's not just doing a study for study's sake and getting filed somewhere. I think we'd like to see some transparency there and ask for that traffic study to be shared with the Neighborhood Association so that we can have a better understanding of why we have kind of hit an impasse with the request to improve safety for the kids in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. A clerk, please call the next speaker.
Alana Klein.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you tonight. One night recently, as I was coming home from work, I noticed a displaced person sitting at a bus stop wrapped in a couple of blankets, obviously freezing cold. I told them that a few weeks prior, I had a short layover between my two jobs and spent a few hours in the mall in the middle of the night because whether temporary or permanent, the mall itself was open, even if none of those doors were. This person told me that they had tried staying in the mall during the night, but a security guard had kicked them out. I do not know if this was the mall's policy, if it was just one individual person, or if I just got lucky that one night. The temperature that night was three degrees. I repeat, three degrees, 29 below freezing. The temperature right now outside is about 10, 15 degrees. If anyone doesn't feel empathy for the situation, I suggest you go out to the bus stop and sit there. You're not allowed to get on a bus, or go home, or camp out at a store, or use your cellphone to occupy your mind. Tell me how long you can take it. These people aren't outside for minutes at a time. They're outside for hours at a time, days at a time. I am no longer sad or depressed about this issue. I am angry. There's a chance that an individual I spoke to is now dead from hypothermia. There are cities that have installed spikes to keep displaced individuals from sleeping on sidewalks. There are others that have made it illegal to feed displaced individuals. Yeah, that's right. People have served a day in prison for giving a starving person a sandwich. These are not solutions to homelessness. These are precursors to genocide. This, in a country whose predominant religion is based upon the birth of a savior whose family was turned away from ends and grew up to preach humility, compassion, and loving your fellow man. During the December holiday season, this mall that I spoke of had donation tables for food bank and charities and such. If this is how you treat displaced individuals, then I have some choice words for what I think of your quote-unquote "charity." Additionally, a few weeks ago, another displaced individual asked me for some change. I typically don't carry cash. I offered to buy him a meal at the food court. He insisted that mall security said he couldn't go into the mall because he had been begging for change outside of it. This confused me and got me a little irate as, for all intents and purposes, he would have been a paying customer if he was sitting down to eat a meal that was paid for. Now, I do realize that the council's power to regulate private entities such as arenas, malls, and 24-hour establishments in this manner is slim to none. However, there are abandoned buildings that can be renovated. There are job and education programs that can be put into place. In this country, there is zero reason for people to be homeless and hungry. When mentioning about buying a meal for that person, an acquaintance at work tried to tell me the quote "buy a man a fish" line and said that I should have taught him how to get a job. How is someone supposed to get a job when they have no address, no phone, no place to shower, no place to wash their clothes, no references, no credentials, deteriorating mental and physical health, and possible drug additions? I have seen stories online that major cities such as, I believe, St. Paul, San Diego, and Philadelphia have hired displaced individuals for city beautification projects such as picking up trash, general maintenance parks, and the like. I think we should bring this type of idea to Albany. In closing, I will repeat the ending of my comments from September, when I previously addressed this issue. What I do know is that we have a homeless population. What I do know is that this has become about corporate greed rather than human compassion. What I do know is that people are suffering and dying in our streets due to hunger, thirst, and exposure to nature's cruel elements. What I do know is, if this is acceptable to me, what I don't know
One minute remaining, Ms. Klein.
if this is acceptable to you. Thank you for your time. Walk out the NRA. Black Lives Matter. Assalamu alaikum.
Thank you. Seeing there is no more individuals signed up this evening for public comment, we deem the public comment period at this time closed. Now moving on to our agenda, approval of minutes from previous meeting. Mr. Conti.
Uh, Mr. President, the President will be approving of minutes for the March 5th meeting.
Second. Mr. Conti. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes passed. Consideration, moving on to consideration of local laws. Local laws, head. Ms. Duchesne.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice local law C, and I ask for its passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Can a clerk please read the local law?
A local law amendment, section 333-107 of Article 12, Alternative Veterans Exemption of Chapter 333 Taxation of Albany City Code for the purposes of conforming City Code provisions to the existing city practice with regard to limitations on the amount of assessed value that shall be exempt for the purposes of applying the alternative veteran exemption.
Any discussion on this local law? See none? Can a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Anani. Yes, co-sponsor, please. Mr. Plaris.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Mr. Conti.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Ms. Duchesne.
Yes.
Ms. Fahey.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Ms. Ferrell.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Igo.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Fifteen affirmative.
Local law passes. Reports of standing committees. Any reports of standing committees? Ms. Fahey.
Thank you. The Planning and Economic Development Committee will meet this Wednesday, the 21st, to discuss Resolution 13.23.18R and receive a, we'll be discussing the role of the IDA and the CRC. And we will be meeting again on Tuesday, the 27th. And we will, representatives from the Sustainability Advisory Committee will be there to discuss the work that they do. And also to discuss openings on both boards on both evenings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports?
Ms. Prills.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety, bless you, Public Safety Committee met on March 12th. It had two purposes for that meeting. The first was to meet with the consultant retained by the administration to conduct the search for our new police chief. And so the committee had the opportunity to ask the consultant questions about the organization, their process. In addition, the consultant asks the committee questions about our personal perceptions, but also the perceptions of our residents as it relates to issues pertaining to the police, the police chief, public safety issues. And so we had a very fruitful conversation. If you were unable to attend, I do have contact information for the consultant. You are more than welcome to contact them and provide your input as they prepare their, to implement their process. And then lastly, we heard from the public regarding concerns as it relates to the recent mass shootings in schools. And so we had some really good conversation, comments from our, members of our community. Thank you.
Ms. Duchesne.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance, Taxation, and Assessment Committee met earlier today. We are conducting interviews for candidates of the, for the Board of Assessment Review. We have one vacancy. We will be continuing those interviews and hopefully concluding them and making a decision tomorrow. We also today took up consideration of local law C, and that was passed out of committee with a positive recommendation. And we have two additional meetings in additional to tomorrow. We have a meeting on April 2nd, and then again on April 10th to take up bonds that have been requested by the Albany Police Department, the Albany Fire Department, and the Department of Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Reports of any ad hoc committee? Okay. Oh, Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the Human Resources and Human Rights Committee met on Wednesday, March 14th, after caucus to take up Resolution 103118R, which related to the transfer of funds from contingency in the Department of Administrative Services to fund the MWBE Fair Housing Coordinator position. And that was voted out of the committee with positive results.
Ms. Dush. Thank you. Moving on to consideration of ordinances. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 233218 and ask for its introduction.
Could a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance accepting the conveyance of all right, title, and interest in dedicating to the public use for street purposes certain lands constituting a portion of lands known as Birch Hill Road in the city of Albany, New York.
Mr. Conti.
Uh, Mr. President, the revenue ordinance is on the agenda. Our held, with the exception of Agenda A number one, uh, Congressman Duchesne, Agenda A number two, of course, is on the call.
Thank you. Ms. Duchesne.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 5.21.18 with amendments. And I ask for its passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $140,000, authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $140,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, golf course capital improvements.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Um, I'm not in favor of asking this ordinance. And I feel that the work would be out of house, or a different story, or a different law in the workers. I also heard that there are a lot of positions, yes, that are not being filled, because that is a result that we can't afford to house. We often have asphalt and work that should be done by sitting, maintaining the atomic property. There's also revenue coming in from this course. I don't understand why they can't have money to fix problems that are developed. I also know that commissioners are going to be leaving the course, I heard. And I went and visited, made pictures of all zombies that have almost been extracted, right, and it starts to rot. There's no range there, but if there is block, then maybe we can do maybe the wall, maybe the section. That I heard from the commissioners said it would take four or five weeks. Maybe we can do the section and collapse. You know, how do you not can do sections? I mean, that wall, it really doesn't, the wall needs to be parched, that wall totally needs to be full. And I know that a lot are not supposed to stack and do that, right? But being that, and I wish I could make the meeting in one state, it's not a town. But I do feel that this is something that I just can't understand.
Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I echo the sentiments of my colleague, Tim Howie, that we should not send our city into more debt and burden our taxpayers with an issue that can be fixed by our city's workforce. It is my recommendation that the ninth hole, which is under discussion, be closed until we can get our city workforce to prioritize the wall to be fixed. Although it may slightly impact, of course, revenues temporarily. And I must point out that, you know, we do break even with revenues, so it don't really, it doesn't really benefit the city that much. Not bonding this project, not bonding this project will save our city and our taxpayers money well into the future, so.
Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President. My vote on this particular matter will not come as a surprise as I have already expressed my concerns with many of my colleagues in this chamber. Many of my 10th Ward constituents will be insulted to hear that I voted to spend, to borrow money to fix the ninth hole on our municipal golf course. There are sidewalks, there are streets, there are infrastructure repairs throughout my ward and also throughout the city that are in dire need of maintenance and also improvements. How money is allocated is a city, is a statement about a city's priority. We have a budget deficit of $12.5 million, and we're trying to convince the governor that we need this recurrent payment to satisfy our recurrent need. This expenditure, which seems to be discretionary and nonessential, has sent the wrong message to my constituents, to the city, and most importantly, to our state government. Our priorities should be focusing on essential needs like fixing our neighborhoods, especially our more challenged neighborhoods that have been neglected for far too long. And with that, I'll be voting no, and I urge my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Mr. Ballard. No, Mr. Johnson, the council member, like, no, he, to you first, give you the option.
Thank you, President, Mr. President. I cannot support this bill for many reasons that were shared by my colleagues, but I just feel like we have to send the right messages out in every direction. So, not to repeat things and make points redundant, but I just can't support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Ballard.
I respect my colleagues' opinions. I do. I disagree with them on this one. I believe that this is a retaining wall that we're talking about. It's a structural problem, a structural entity we need to repair. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me? Okay. This is why I don't use the mic. It's a structural problem that we have. It's some, a property that we own. And we have a responsibility to maintain our property. We disagree on this one, and that's okay. We'll probably agree on others. But I will be voting in support of this because I see this as a maintaining of our property. We just had a good discussion about what happens when we don't maintain our properties. We had a property that we purchased maybe 30 years ago for $5 million, which we can't even sell for $650,000 today because we didn't maintain it. We let it decay. We have to maintain this property, even if we want to sell it, or whatever you want to do in the future. It's our property. It's our responsibility to take care of. And I am voting for this because I think if we don't take care of it, it will cost us more money in the long run. And that's hurting taxpayers more than it's helping them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Mr. O'Brien.
I'm in agreement with what Alfredo said. And I do want to note, and it's been noted in the various discussions we had, that the golf course serves as a park. It serves as a nature park. It serves as a park for kids from all over the city for sleigh riding. It serves as a dog walking park. I've used the nature trails there. And I don't know, maybe there was a bit of bad planning. That could be true. But they are under a timeframe to get it up and running because the season normally begins around April 15th. So you can't operate a golf course and make to, and expect to have it be marketable with one of the holes missing, with one of the nine holes missing. So I'm going to vote in favor of this. So, I'm going to vote in favor of this. If there are some lessons to be learned about planning, so be it. But I'm not going to hold this park at, you know, at bay, because of perhaps some things, some better planning that should have been done. Thank you.
Mr. Iago?
Mr. President, fellow members, I've spoken on this before, and I have supported every park project in this city, whether it be Arbor Hill Baseball Park a couple of years ago. I stood up and I says, "All right, let's get the lights here, okay? Let's get the lights. If you can't get them this year, rent lights to put up there." I've supported the steps going down to Lincoln Park, okay? Every, every field that I've played on, basketball carts over on North Manning Boulevard, Swinburne Park, when they couldn't freeze ice anymore. These don't produce anything, but they're for the good of the kids, okay? This, as Mr. O'Brien said, is a park also. And on top of that, it's a moneymaker, okay? And some of this money that we get from there is being used for some of the projects that I just talked about. You're just being short-sighted, and Alfredo said, "Maintenance is everything." Look at City Hall, we said, Alfredo and I were sitting looking in the windows. I mentioned before, the neglect to this building is costing us big time. Anytime you neglect any capital improvements, it's coming back to bite you in the butt, okay? And it might not be next year or the year after, but citizens are going to pay for it down the line. Just keep that all in mind. Thank you.
I have, so it's, I might start singing, I don't even know. I just wanted to note, and then I can really start singing. I just wanted to note that I do definitely appreciate the dialogue with us. I think dialogue is an important thing. However, this is an absolute public safety issue. There are children that are, the sledding hill, it's right by the sledding hill, and you have to factor that in. This is not a year-round golf course, we don't live in that kind of climate. For a large part of the year, in fact, the majority of the year, it's a park that people use regularly. People, kids sled there, people walk there, people hike there, people ski there, they walk their dogs there. You can't have a wall that is crumbling down where kids sled. It's just not okay. So, I understand people's issues with it, but there are times that you need to put the people in our city first and the safety of them using these places first. And I think this is the case across the city. I would fully support this kind of infrastructure improvement anywhere, or repair, really.
Thank you. Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to say a couple of things. I, Councilmember Howey brought up the concern that, "Why aren't we doing it in-house?" But I would ask, and I have made this mistake myself before, I would ask you, when you have those types of concerns about, "Why isn't this work being done?", please reach out to the Commissioner of General Services and have those conversations with people in the departments. Find out why it is, or why does not that work can or cannot be done. And I think that educating yourself on these, on some of these issues by taking that extra step, talking to the people in departments, is an important thing to do when you're making these kinds of decisions. And those, and reaching out like that is always welcomed by the departments as well, because the decisions that they make, there are many reasons they make the decisions that they do. And I think you would find, find that extremely helpful. The other thing I wanted to say is, I wanted to mention just how important, again, and others have said this, how important it is to maintain our facilities. I am reminded of our, we had this fabulous, this is quite a while ago now, previous administration, we had this fabulous public bath down in the South End. I mean, truly historic property. And there were many who still used it as a place to go and take a swim. And over the years, though, this facility was not maintained and gradually, gradually came into disrepair. And it, it's a, to me, it's an example of what happens when you don't keep up one of these facilities. And now, there it is, over on, I think it's Fourth Avenue, all boarded up. And it's the saddest thing, because it really could be a great resource in that neighborhood. I see this as something similar. We have, we have this resource, this golf course, it's revenue-producing. Many, many people in the city take advantage of it for many different recreation activities. I'm also concerned with the liability that we talked about. Councilmember Farrell, she had that photograph, it showed you, the kids in the background. It's important that something like that be repaired. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, my, and at the time, that was, it's been years back, eight, ten years ago, the mayor, Mayor Jennings, proposed closing the back half of the budget. It was the council, majority, I don't remember, forty percent of the council, I can't remember, in support, putting the funding back in the budget to keep the back half open. And also, making investments as appropriate there to have it, having the facility, so that it would be sensible. Unfortunately, the mayor didn't have that, and wanted to put it back in. But I wanted to, so, you know, you know, there are a number of recreation programs that we provide, tennis courts, basketball courts, the gas state sports park, spring pools, pools. Golf is a part that overall arranges the recreational programs that we provide for residents of our city. And, you know, one of the things that makes urban area life attractive to living, not even by the house, but with constituency that uses the golf course, it's constituency that uses tennis courts, has basketball courts, courts and a pool, but not everyone uses everything. We have some investments coming out, I don't know, in terms of the money that we still have on our agenda, includes funding for the ground equipment, investment in our revolution programs, as to what we, we do for our pool. Some members will remember, it was ten or seven years ago, Mayor Jennings proposed, because of these specific issues, where it should be there, proposed tearing it up, closing it down, and rebuilding it to a relatively small pool that would be nowhere to measure the size of what, what the park is, and what that is in economy. The council committee said, "No, it's an important resource, it's an important part of our history, it's important to the community, and we need to maintain it." And we were looking for the first, that decision, of the other town members, to keep that going. With the happenstance of large investment in that pool, this year, you know, the leakage issues and the infrastructure issues have not gone away. So, you know, it's a significant study, and then the infrastructure capital investment in terms of maintaining that pool. I think all members who support making that investment, plus keeping that going, is an important part of the recreational programs that it offers. I think Ms. Farrell makes it an important part, and we think that as a golf course, and in terms of golf course, part of it, the revenue we receive covers the operations of the course, not everything, the capital investment covers the operations. And all that, I remember, goes into the general fund. It's not dedicated to the golf course, but it's working in terms of the revenue commitment, it comes in, and the expenses that are attributed to it, it balances out basically where it would be funded. In fact, you know, I think we moved some personnel, that's a golf course, during the season, away, that is still probably attributed to golf course. So, it really did a real quality system, it did really show the product. But what's important is that, for a good part of the year, the majority is actually a park for residents that's used by residents of the city, why? So, I think going back, you know, looking at already, talking to the commissioner, it's more than just rebuilding the wall, there's a genetic engineering study that's been done as part of this project, it's a two-phase project, in terms of the engineering design, the specification, second part is the construction, the reconstruction of the wall. You know, the issue that's about important in terms of the work and how the abilities are. And I consider that Detroit, some of that in-house, it was a duty for other projects that are all on sidewalks and repairs of things of that nature. So, this is an investment, and we have a discussion about the long-term future of the golf course. I, you know, that itself is a lengthy discussion, a lot of the work has been interviewed, that is one of my direction. But for now, I think it's important to maintain, to do the research, what we need to do, to make some investment in me. So, also, so also, so as not to jeopardize the revenues that currently are pushing a lot to cover the operation costs. I'll be able to discuss on this, and I'd prefer to apologize to the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be in favor of this resolution. I just want to note for the record, I'm appalled that we have council members voting against this, who actually work every day with children and in the parks. And I find that appalling, that they are here representing the kids. Every day, they go to work, and that's like me saying, "You know, I'm going to vote against your playground." It's a structure, this is very, this is needing. So, my point is, I can't believe they're going to vote against this, when they go to school, work every day, and they deal with children, and they're going to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Ms. Dushay, and once Ms. Dushay speaks, no, allow anybody else to speak, because she is the carrier of the bill, so. Ms. Dushay?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Everybody here knows I'm in favor of fiscal prudence, especially when it comes to our bonding, and I've been watching very carefully and, you know, how we are dealing with our expenditures. I understand the desire to see this particular improvement cost us less. It will go out to bid, it will be the lowest bidder, responsible bidder will win it, and hopefully it will come in under the amount that is authorized by this bond, and I fully expect that it will. I do want to highlight what Mr. Conti was saying and other people were saying about the fact that we have been approving, and I think that, you know, for some of the newer members, this is very important to understand, we have been approving substantial amounts of bonding to improve basketball courts, tennis courts, and parks throughout the city. And we do have some additional bonding this year that is intended to complete the last projects. There are some projects that have been authorized in the past, in terms of some of our parks, that the work is not being done until this year. So, you haven't even seen all of the benefits of everything that we have authorized. But this is not about picking one part of the city over another. Everything has been being looked at across the city for many years. And I would hate to think that we're going to say we're not going to invest in our parks and our playgrounds and facilities, such as a skateboarding park. They're really not that many people use, but for the individuals who do use it, they consider it a very important, vital part. And the parents and other people who know skateboarders know that it's important to have that kind of facility in the city, and that kind of investment has been made. And I would hate for us to say essentially, every pothole, as much as we'd like to see it, every pothole and every crumbling sidewalk is going to be addressed in the city before we invest in our parks. I think that we need to be looking at lifting up the city throughout, and I think that that is what we have been doing, certainly during my time on the council. I do also want to address the whole concept that I haven't, and I apologize that I haven't gotten involved in this part of the discussion in our caucuses, about the idea that the golf course has, is money-making, and therefore they should spend their own money on this. The reality is, and some of you have not been through the whole budget process, unless it is allocated through the budget, they don't, they don't sit on a slush fund. The income that comes into the city, the different departments don't sit on the money that they bring in. It all goes into the budget, and then it is allocated out of that budget. And we went through that process in the fall, and that money has been allocated. The, the, you know, the amount of money, you know, there's not a dedicated fund that is specifically for the golf course that you can then take the money out of that particular fund. We can set things up that way if people want to do that, but that is not the way we exist currently. So, suggesting that the golf course, the DGS, should just take money out of the golf course itself is not something that they are legally permitted to do. That's not the way we're currently set up. And I think that we'll continue to have some of that kind of dialogue. With regard to the whole issue of, I mean, I think some of this is getting at, you know, the whole issue as to whether or not the golf course is a worthwhile investment at all. And I think that that is a separate discussion that we need to take up, not while we allow a hazardous situation to exist out at the golf course in the meantime. Before, when, when you are considering putting property on the market, when you're considering doing anything, you need to be maintaining your property so that it brings the best price. In terms of the idea of not, I mean, this project as it is, according to the RFP, is not going to be completed until mid to late June. And that's bad enough with respect to the potential for it turning golfers off to coming to our golf course. So, it's not like all of a sudden, we look at things and we get to reconfigure things, and we get to, I want to say, you know, specifically direct, and I, and I do caution myself against this, micromanaging the departments and how they do their work. It's one thing to take the broader overview and provide guidance moving forward, but to say in this year, "No, you're, what you have decided to do this year is not acceptable, and you need to change things." Part of the, part of what bonding is supposed to be doing is, rather than putting things in the budget and putting personnel in the budget that is needed for a one-time event or a specific project with specific skills, you look to hire the right amount of staff for your everyday responsibilities, and that is what DGS has done and continues to do, and they try to do it within their, within their budget and recognizing the fiscal restraints that we're under. For them to hire people, put people on staff, so that they can take care of some major project here and some major project there, that doesn't, then leaves those workers potentially idle the rest of the time, or doesn't, isn't putting their skills to the best use the rest of the time, is one of the factors that they need to be looking at as they're deciding whether or not, is this something that we contract out for, or is this something that we take care of in-house? I have a tremendous amount of respect for Commissioner Morabli and his judgment on things like this, and also Mr. Milano, and the number of projects that we bond with regard to building improvements. We could argue that a lot of that could be done in-house. The reality is, we contract out for a lot of our roads, but we also do do some of that in-house. And so, it's a balance. And, and, you know, figuring that out and providing guidance moving forward as we look at these issues, I think can be helpful, and to have that dialogue, as Ms. Fahy said, to have that kind of dialogue with the commissioners in terms of, of how do we best use our limited resource financially and with regard to personnel? And so, I am voting in favor of this, because I do think that this improvement is needed, that it creates a liability issue if we leave it out there unaddressed for an extended period of time. And I trust the judgment of Commissioner Morabli in saying that this is the level of a project that we really need to contract out for, rather than relying on staff in-house to take care of. to take care of. I do urge people to reconsider their positions on this, and I do hope that this will pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duchesne. Mr. Duchesne, can clerk please call the roll? Mr. Anani?
No.
Mr. Plarris?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Fahy?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
No.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Ten affirmative, five negative? Ordinance passes. Moving on to consideration of resolutions.
May I just, I just, I just want to clarify that Item Two, Ordinance 10.21.18, has been withdrawn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Conti stated that earlier. Moving on to consideration of resolutions, resolutions introduced. Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 132318R, and ask for its introduction.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council consented to the amendment of the City of Albany Capital Resources Corporation's certificate of incorporating, of corporation, pardon me, authorizing the continuation of the authority of the City of Albany Capital Resource Corporation to issue obligations to finance projects to be undertaken by the corporation and to make such authority permanent.
Mr. Conti?
Mr. President, that is referred to the planning committee, and, question, the remaining resolutions are held with the exception of the January number two, the article.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 103118 as amended, and ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council consented to the transfer of funds which will affect the salary total in the Department of Administrative Services for the 2018 budget.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll? Mr. Anani?
Yes.
Mr. Plarris?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
No.
Ms. Fahy?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Fourteen affirmative, one negative? Resolution passes. Any miscellaneous or unfinished business? Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer a list of names for appointee to Commissioner Deeds and waive the reading of their names.
Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolve that the following persons be and are hereby appointed Commissioner Deeds for the City of Albany, New York, for the term ending December 31, 2018.
Miscellaneous? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, this is, this is, this is, uh, 132318, law, to our city, you know, the resolution of the latest bill was committed in the January, um, who want to introduce this, what is the resolution? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Second? Meaning adjourned?